Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for April 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I do open forum?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Open forum? Is anybody here for open forum? Seeing no one, I will close open forum, and we are going to take things just out of order with one thing. We're going to do action item number four at the request of Mr. Spagon. So do you want to read that?
Yeah. Bob, you want to come on up and just sit at the table here? Good. How are you, buddy? So this is, uh, this works out really well. As you can see, we've got quite a few representatives behind us, and I'm sure they're all aware about-
The big guns are here tonight.
The big guns are here, yep.
All for you, Bobby.
So Bob is on the quarter of our Route 18 project. He's one of the five entities that we have to negotiate in order to get the easement. Route 18 project is an agreement between the city of Brockton and the town of East Bridgewater to bring SOAR into our district, which conducts ourselves from the north end where the start of Whitman is, town of Whitman, all the way through Highland Street and East Bridgewater, right down to 18. It encompasses about 300-plus acres of land. We've got multiple different types of projects going on. We've got 240 units of housing down one end, and of course, we pick up on the other, opposite end, the Hard Hanks Building and the now Signature Medical Facility for potential hookup as well. So we've had, we've been very lucky. We've had $7 million in grant money that's been brought to the town of East Bridgewater, $4 million of it from the federal government, and then, of course, $3 million from the, excuse me, opposite, $3 million from the federal government, $4 million from the state. So, the reason we bring Mr. DeAustino up here, Bobby D., as we call him here in town, he is one of the entities, one of the property owners on there, that we had to work out an easement agreement with him. It went very smoothly. There was, there was no bumps in the road at all. It only took six months. But other than that, Bob, we're going to make a, make a motion to, um, to vote an agreement with Bobby D. Really Trust in regards to the agreement and the easement related to the SOAR line and the construction of the pipe.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I don't have any. Bob, do you have anything?
I'd like to thank everyone-
Yeah.
-who's involved with this.
Absolutely.
Especially Peter and John Haynes. It wasn't as smooth as it could have been.
Yep, that's fine.
But it was new to everyone, right? And it worked out good at the end.
Yeah.
And hopefully, it's good for the future for everybody, too. Anybody beyond me, before me, you know, with the line.
Yep.
So I want to thank everyone, and it went smooth. So now the hard parts. After I sign this, the hard part's on, right?
That's it, yeah. We got, we've got a couple more.
This is the easy part.
This is the easy part. Wow, that's what they're telling me anyways.
Yeah.
So I won't, I won't tell you my thoughts about municipal government and how it took so long to get to this point, but it-
We've already got it.
And we got the big guns here.
Yeah, that's why. I'll be nice, I'll be nice tonight.
Yep.
But anyways, yeah, Bob, I'm glad, you know, you, you're one of the people that we had to work with because, obviously, it made it easier for me and John to, you know, talk shop openly and honestly about how to get this project done. And we're about, I think we're two easements away from, from finishing up the deal out of the five that are on there, so.
Good.
Yeah, this would be great for the town of East Bridgewater, great, great for Brockton, as well as the surrounding towns, as we create more jobs and more housing in that area, so.
Good.
That's it, Bob. I appreciate you coming in. I know we've got some papers to sign real quick.
We got them. You're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Are you sure?
I could keep talking for hours.
Would you want mine?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you sign anything?
Now you can-
The board's going to sign.
Now you can sign your-
Yep.
Everything away.
I've signed one here.
Is this an original?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then I'll get you a copy.
Yep. All right, we good?
Great.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks again.
All right.
Enjoy your night. Thanks, dude.
Bob, I'm going to give you a hand for that.
Thank you.
You said some words there.
Oh, and the guy hug and everything.
And I'll give you a good look.
Peter, is that this?
Yeah, this is the one we have here, I believe.
Oh, okay. I can, we can sign it after.
Sign that as well, yep.
Yeah.
All right. Now, the reason why you're all here, I imagine. Plymouth County representatives are here to present us with a check. Mr. Valenzola?
Thank you. I invite Senator Congressman and Rep. Bob to join us here.
We also have Congressman Lynch and Senator Brady and State Rep. Allison Sullivan-Almeida with us. Feel very important tonight.
Thank you.
How much of a portion of the check are you all taking for your presence here tonight?
The team approach.
Zero. You know, the beauty of the county is we don't, we don't take any of it, so, which is good. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the membership. I'm Commissioner Jared Valenzola. It's a pleasure to be here this evening with you folks, joined by Congressman Lynch, Senator Brady, and Representative Sullivan-Almeida. I do want to just quickly send the regrets to Commissioners Wright and Commissioners Hanley. They couldn't make it this evening, as well as Treasurer O'Brien. As I say often when we come here, we really do emphasize the team, and I'll turn it over to the Congressman in a second, but we're really proud of the teamwork that we have with the town of East Bridgewater. You guys have been excellent and creative users of this program, using this for ESAR, to fill the gaps with some ESAR funding with, with your schools. Certainly a different and unique use, but an important use, right? There's certainly, there were gaps that occurred due to the pandemic for a lot of students, so to be able to utilize some of these ARPA funds to continue keeping those services and programs going is a really unique use. So, again, we're grateful for the partnership for Charlie, for your entire team here in Town Hall. We can't make the county ARPA program successful without the participation of our member community, so we're really grateful for that. We do have some guests and dignitaries, so I would just like to invite them to say a few words. We'll start with Congressman Lynch.
No, thank, thank you, Jared. This, this is unique in Plymouth County. Every other county in the state basically handed the money to the state and they distributed it in that fashion. But Plymouth County wisely, I think, retained the ability to work with local communities and try to be more specific about priority needs as viewed by the local community, not by the state. I mean, that was the whole reason behind ARPA and the CARES Act was that rather than try to make those decisions in Washington, what your priorities would, would be, we released the money and said, "We're going to rely on the discretion of local towns, cities, and, and the state, and, and counties to make that decision." So in this case, as you may remember, under, under the CARES Act, the town of East Bridgewater received 2.17 million. But that was, that was more or less money that we, we were trying to replace tax revenue that you would have earned, but for the fact that a lot of the economy was shut down because of the pandemic. I know that, I know that East Bridgewater used it for multiple purposes. I know there was a problem with kids learning from home without laptops, and, and I, I think the town made some dispersments in, in that regard. I know later on, either with CARES Act or ARPA, I think there was a purchase of an ambulance that was, that was necessary. There was also some early design on, on a sewer project as well that was undertaken, and I'm forgetting what, but, but everything was, was clearly, the decisions were made by, by town officials, which is the way this whole thing was, was, was planned, and with the coordination of, of our state colleagues. So between the 2.17 million on the CARES Act and then, I think it was 2.6 million for ARPA, we were able to, to pitch in here. This last allotment, which is $100,000, $109,000, also from ARPA, I, I believe the town is going to use it for extending mental health services to students within the, the school system, which is, which is great. We understand that, you know, that a lot of towns are struggling right now for, for those type of funds. So it's a, it's a, a need that is being, is not being met in a lot of towns. So a lot of towns are struggling with, with that. But I'm just thankful to my colleagues, both Representative Sullivan-Almeida and I gotta keep remembering-
Keep remembering.
I'm working on that. And Senator Brady, as well as our, our county contingent, they've done a great job in terms of making sure that the communication between the local officials, state officials, county officials, and the federal officials is, is on the same page so that we can do our best to, to represent you and, and bring you the services and resources that you need. So appreciate your kindness in inviting us here today, and happy that we have some good news for East Bridgewater.
No, thank you so much. It's great to have you in the district. We really appreciate your support. You've been really great about showing up at our different events, town meeting and tonight, and we appreciate that. And also the, the flexibility that you gave us through the county to, to take the money the way we did.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that.
Yeah, no, we're, we're very grateful, too, for Congressman Lynch's support. There was some consternation when we did CARES and, again, when we ventured doing ARPA, but I know the county was bolstered by the support of both our legislative partners, Senator Brady and Rep. Sullivan-Almeida, but also Congressman Lynch. And it really is that teamwork and partnership that's been able to keep us going and making sure that East Bridgewater and every other member community does well, but we're really grateful for the Congressman's support.
I do want to add one little piece of this, and that is the cost of overhead. So in, in many states, we, the administrative costs were, were pretty significant. So the, the state ate up a lot of the money that should have gone to local communities. I want to say that when we gave it to Plymouth County, there was very, very little overhead. So all the money that was targeted to local communities went to local communities with, you know, below 1% in terms of overhead costs and administrative costs. So that's, that's to their credit. And, you know, we've had that discussion at the federal level about how, how to make sure the benefits of that federal funding are maximized at the local level, rather than being eaten up in an administrative process.
Yeah.
So just want to give Jared and, and the county commissioners credit where credit is due.
Thank you for making note of that.
Yeah.
That's great.
.8%, .87 was our cost for CARES. We're trending 1% with ARPA. I think the national average is about 7% to 10%.
Yeah.
That's great. That makes a big difference-
Yeah.
-in dollars coming into the town.
Absolutely. So I'd like to just ask Senator Brady if he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner. As the Congressman mentioned, we've been very fortunate. When, you know, no one does it alone. We've had a great team with our local elected officials in our county and our federal delegation. When the county applied for the ARPA money and even the CARES Act, there was concern from a prior administration. They wanted to control the funding and so forth. And the county has done a tremendous job, expeditionally getting the money more efficiently into the cities and towns they represent. Obviously, the city of Brockton, several towns that I represent, and I know the Congressman and the representative represents, and nobody does it alone. So we're very fortunate. I've got a great relationship with our Representative Sullivan-Almeida and our Congressman Lynch and our county officials. And we're very fortunate that this money has been distributed efficiently to the county. And any help we can be moving forward, and, and I wanted, I'm grateful with the Route 18 project as well, because, again, without the federal delegations helping, a local state working together. And I know there were some bumps in the road. Some people, like we, you had to do some land taking, thank you, with Mr. Dagicino, who I've known his family very well. But even there were some concerns. Some people wanted road reads and intersection, and it's, it's a tough thing to get things done. So that's so important. Transportation issues are very important across the Commonwealth. We see coming out of this winter, even though we didn't have much snow, it's been so much rain, the roads are in tough shape, so we've got to do more funding into the district. On a good note, you know, we've had a few months of downturn funding at the state level because of federal money, you know, the ARPA money and the COVID money and so forth had been already set forth. But the only thing that was moving forward, like real estate values, as we know, has gone through the roof, so we are getting tax revenue. But big-ticket items like washes and dries and automobiles, those sealed some downs. We're not getting the revenue, but the good news, the month of March revenue has been up at the Commonwealth, so hopefully we can get the local aid increased for the-
That'd be great.
And any, any help we can be, I mean, the government did her budget, and it goes to the House of Representatives, and it's going to come to the Senate. So any help we can be moving forward, please let us know, and I appreciate the relationship we have.
Got a lot of department heads in this room and nodding their heads and saying, "Yes, please."
Absolutely, yes.
I think every single one of them has called my office. We've been in constant communication.
Thank you, Senator Brady.
Thank you. And I'll pass it over to our representative.
Yes, thank you. And I, obviously, I appreciate the three of you here, as well as the Board of Selectmen. I also want to recognize Superintendent Legault for her hard work on addressing this much-needed issue. We hear time and time again, the mental health in the schools and what we need to do for the ESAR funding and how that's ending, and the, the key role that these individuals have played in our schools because of a post-COVID era. So it's a very unique situation that we're able to get funding through the ARPA funding to hopefully continue that. I know it's a little bit touch and go when our state budget comes down, so that, to hopefully maybe offset it a little bit, but this definitely helps. So I want to thank Congressman Lynch for his efforts on bringing that funding federally to the, to the local communities. And I think most likely, the other counties will see what Plymouth County has done, so if this ever happens again, I don't think they'll be so quick to just donate their money.
Could you back that up a little bit?
I mean, here's the thing is, each county-
Federal funding, yes, but not for this reason ever again.
No, 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 definitely not for this reason. But, you know, it was a big, it was a big fight back in, you know, when, when we originally were getting this funding.
People were upset with us.
We had a lot of people that were pushing on us to say, "No, you need to talk to your county commissioners," and, and they need to give it to the state.
Yep.
And we've seen it very closely of what monies we've been getting, especially from my district, Abington, Whitman, and East Bridgewater, very small communities comparison to the city of Brockton or the city of Randall, similar to what Senator Brady represents. We wouldn't have been able to receive that kind of funding if it went to the state level. So I do appreciate the county commissioners and my colleagues within Plymouth County, who really fought back against the administration to say, "No, we're, we're standing strong with our county, and we believe this is the best decision." And we had faith that they were actually going to be able to come through with it and not make us look bad on the state level. So we appreciate you guys on the county level for doing that. But we took a risk, but the risk was definitely worth the reward. So we thank you guys for constantly looking at different opportunities to get that ARPA funding, so it makes our job a little bit easier on the state level on funding, especially when funding might be a little bit tight. So I do want to thank everybody here for the hard work that they do.
We appreciate that.
So I know it is a team effort from everybody.
It absolutely is.
Not just the four of us sitting up here and the three of you sitting over there, but it's, it's a whole community participation, so.
It absolutely is. Thank you.
We get to do the easy part.
Well, we had a lot of faith in the county commissioners and in Treasurer O'Brien, of course, and you can tell him we missed him tonight.
We will, I will.
I'm surprised he's not here, given the photo op that's available.
You're calling it well.
I do, for many years.
No, he's been dealing with the family matter. But one of the things I just, I'll add, if there's nothing else, and I really do appreciate working with these colleagues, you know, one of the, one of the things that I always remind myself of, we all work for the same people. We're all elected by the same people, and we're here to do a job for those people. I'm local. I grew up in Rockland. I live in Rockland. Rep. Sullivan-Almeida's in Abington, right? We were elected to serve you, the Congressman and the Senator, of course, in Boston. Like, we're your local people. And that's not a put-down of the state, but the state has significant concerns. The state has many cities to think about across the Commonwealth that rightfully, to some degree, take some of their attention. But a lot of times, and we've seen it over the years, those smaller communities get left behind. East Bridgewater's get left behind when the state doesn't. It's not a put-down. It's just their resources are tied up dealing with the larger municipalities and the Commonwealth. And the beauty of working with the county is, the city of Brockton certainly was very well taken care of under CARES and has been under ARPA, but so has East Bridgewater, so has Plimpton, so has Marion and Matipois at Hingham and Hall, everywhere in between. We've done it fairly inequitably. And I can tell you, the beauty being local, Rep. Sullivan-Almeida, Senator Brady, Congressman Lynch, they call me, they call Treasurer O'Brien. We have relationships, and they're always on the horn, making sure East Bridgewater is getting what they need and what you folks deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to add anything?
No, just on a local level, I'd like to just say, you know, the work that we did was, was trivial compared to what the work of our ARPA committee did, right?
Yeah.
So that was a real group. And we, we had a team that was put together. This woman right over here, Rebecca Johnson, who did a lot of the heavy lifting as well. So even though we're representing the town and we're sitting here, again, like you guys say all the time, right, it's the people that you put around you that really make a difference. So I think Dan Pika was the chair of that committee, if I remember. Was Dave Walsh one of the two?
No, it was some-
That was John Maggi.
It was John Maggi.
John Maggi, okay, all three of them. So, you know, I'll go right down the list. You know, those are names that we hear all the time, you know, former selectmen, finance committee members, so, and another, actually, two former selectmen. So those are the people that we, we count on to, you know, go through, kind of get into the, the weed, so to speak, to find out what, you know, what we need to learn about and make our job a hell of a lot easier, for sure.
Absolutely.
I'll just echo what, you know, Peter said and what, what all you people have said. It all goes back to a team. And I know, because I've been around a little bit longer than some people, there was a lot of apprehension when the county was going to take over. Then I sat down and I talked to, and to commit at .87 for administrative causes, absolutely incredible. That's also what you said you were going to do, and you followed through. So everyone there, everyone out there, you know, all a team, it, it's just an incredible job. We, we can't thank the feds. We can't thank the state. And our local representative, Allison Sullivan-Almeida hates to, she has my phone there and says, "Do I have to talk to him again?"
It says, "Do not pick up."
I put him on "do not disturb, don't tell him."
The relationships are tremendous. And again, Charlie and Rebecca and Lee, you know, they, they make us run.
Yeah.
You know, we, we sit here.
Rebecca's always, always answering our phone calls.
But those are the people that run the town right now, are those three people. All the credit in the world.
Yep. Absolutely. We couldn't have done it without the support of everybody. And, and all of this money has gone to do good things in East Bridgewater, which is what you all wanted and what we want, you know, to represent the people that put us all in the seats, so.
Yeah, I, I do want to say, from, for the ARPA committee representing East Bridgewater, a lot of information had to go back and forth to make sure that the projects that you were choosing were qualified, that we didn't have any, you know, miscommunications or anything like that. They were very exacting, so my compliments to, to the ARPA committee here in, in East Bridgewater. You really made, made it all happen, so.
Good to know. Great.
And I want to add, too, since COVID, we, you know, through that tough time, there's been a lot of issues in schools with mental health, because the kids were being tard at home for time being, and they got to get re-accolated in the system. And I want to thank our superintendent teachers, because they do a lot of good work for our students out there. And it's a different world than when I was at school.
It's a hard job. It's made harder than ever in the last few years. So, thank you. All right.
Okay. I think we have the, the now very well-traveled check that Congressman Lynch washed me in hull last week. Almost flew out of my hands during that snow, rainstorm.
I know. I knew we were getting a check. I didn't know there was a photo op tonight. I will tell you that.
At that time, Mr. Check.
I should have, I should, I should have known.
See, Congressman Lynch is in better shape than me. If I played a bond, this would be a-
You got to hand out your wallet, right?
Right, right. Tell some of the selectmen.
I'd like to, where's Melanie? Hey, this, uh, come, two guys, just want to make sure we recognize, you know, Melanie Dean did a lot of work as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we all good? Are we all good?
I don't know which one to look at.
Thank you, Senator.
I appreciate the work. Thank you, Jared.
Oh, good. I was gonna, I was gonna-
All right.
All right, clear the hall.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moderator here?
He's not here, so why don't-
Chris is here.
Want to do some action items?
Hmm?
Yeah.
We'll do action items until Mr. Looney gets here.
Okay.
So we're going to skip number one?
Yes.
Yep. Approve the minutes of the March 25th, 2024 Selectmen Board's meeting.
Select, second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved but not released the minutes of the March 25th, 2024 Select Board Executive Session meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion vote, increase the number of working hours per week for the coordination of volunteers at the East Bridgewater Council on Aging.
Second.
Second. Do we have any backup info on that?
Uh, we do. Charlie, did you want to speak on the COA hour changes?
No. Hello?
Charlie?
Um, so-
I mean, I kind of know, but-
This is a way currently has a part-time-
And they want to make it full-time.
Um, and they'd like to make it full-time.
And the funding is coming from the formula grant?
Correct.
Not from town budget?
Correct.
Okay.
And this is not the, the first time they-
Wow, it's like, it's like God just came in.
We thought that was an eclipse. It was Charlie coming in.
What's on your desk?
Okay, great. Thank you. So I mean, I think it's, it's fine. It's not going to impact the budget.
We need it officially underwritten because of the union contract.
Okay.
The board is approving the increase in hours to 35, starting on July 1st.
Okay.
As stated.
This is not the first time. This is the second time they've increased the hours just because of the overwhelming response they're now getting from senior citizens down there. They just need one person to do all the coordinating.
Yeah, makes sense. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Discussion vote on non-union wage increase for the FY 2025, not on contracts.
Are we doing this? Charlie?
Yeah, so obviously, we're working through the budget right now. The board is coming in tomorrow and on the 16th, and then the 17th.
Shall we pass this over?
The, we need to make a decision for the non-union folks who have, I mean, staff rigs, and also those who don't have personal contracts or similar documents. Where, and still have those can be added into the budget to be presented to the planning committee. And what I'm recommending with the board's approval is a 2% increase for those individuals. This does not, over the offices that will deal with the executive session.
Okay. So this is for people that, they're not in the union, they don't have a contract with us, but they, there's the other handful of people. Yeah?
Right. We have a few department heads, in simple essence, if they have a job offer or, and we have some people on the wage grades. And then we have a bunch of miscellaneous officers that we think, you know, like the riding inspectors and the dog officers and everything like that.
Okay.
Need to be included in this.
Okay, great. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim, you want to do yours right now?
Sure.
All right. Discussion vote on the wage scale for the fire chief administrative assistant. You want to come up? You want to talk? What do you want to do?
Well, briefly, Chris White's retiring, I mean, after 12 years of the fire, about 20 years at the town. She has her own wage scale because she was a union employee and was taken out of the union, so there's no real place to put the new administrative assistant. So it just made sense to me to just match what the police found's administrative assistant is on the wage scale and just make it-
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Yep.
I think we got it.
It is six-thirty.
All right.
Shall we go to our appointment with moderator, town council, town accountant, town administrator, and select board to review, approve, and close the warrant. Hello, Mr. Looney?
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for coming in.
Sit at this.
Hey, Chris.
He's coming up.
Hello.
This is my first time looking at this.
This is, this is your first time with eyes on it?
If I had, I'd say it. Him too.
All right, then.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't change too much year in, year out.
Nope.
Not even the players.
No. Well, this, this is my twentieth one.
Is it really?
Yep.
Wow.
Being moderator?
Yep.
Really?
Yep, my twentieth, this will be my twentieth annual town meeting as moderator.
Wow.
If anyone wants a job.
Thank you.
That used to be my dream job, and then I, you know, this just.
All right, so, I mean, obviously.
So you took a nightmare instead.
So Chris is here in case anything illegal, because you know, I don't.
Yep.
Question legality of it. That's why you pay him the big bucks. I mean, what we do in these, we always do, I mean, we just go through them and, you know, see who's going to present them and whatnot. I mean, I think that's all we really do.
Right, yep, that's fine.
You can't discuss the, you can't discuss the.
Nope.
Board of the articles. So, so since you're the chairman, we'll give you the first one.
Okay.
And unless, unless differently, I think we have, and that's why Chris is here.
Rebecca, are you going to track this part of it? I will, thank you.
The first one, and just the majority.
Yeah, idea.
I was going to say, I know, okay, with here.
I know, you should be on that list.
Well, she is, she is on, you said town clerk.
I didn't, though, it's not.
What are we looking at?
Moderator, town council, town accountant, town administrator, and select board. But we're glad you're here. Okay.
That's just the way it's always been. I can add.
We should add that, yeah, for going forward.
Article two, Chief Aaron. Three the same, four the same, these are all, these are all majority, there's no ball or anything, they're all majority.
And that's it for the special?
That's it.
Yep.
All right, so, we started a couple of years ago, remember, these consensus articles? So what we do is we take them, I don't know which, I haven't looked through yet, so I know the first one's a consensus. I don't know what else, is there anything else marked in here?
Number five. Is number one, number five, and number seven, I think?
Six.
Six.
Is that it this time?
Yep.
Just one, five, and six, yeah, that's it.
All right, so we'll, so I see, we'll, we'll take those, as, at the beginning, we'll take those, one, five, and six. Peter, you want them?
One?
Well, yeah, we, one, we'll cover one, five, and six.
All right.
And can you just say, majority, two-thirds?
Yeah, I did, yeah, I did, the first, the first one's all majority.
Right, yeah, just one's majority.
This one's majority. Is it Dan Pika's of the, is he Finance Committee Capital? Who's Finance Committee Chair?
Dan, Dan Pika.
Yeah, so he'll have, he'll have article two. And that's a majority. David, article three?
Yep.
Majority. Article four, who's the head of it? David Walsh?
Dave Walsh, yep.
And that's also, there's no, there's no ball in the, like, this is just.
One coming from, looks like capital stabilization.
That would require two-thirds, I would.
That would be a two-thirds.
So we just put the whole thing as a two-third, because one part of it's coming out of stabilization. Article five and six are taken out, though. They go to the first one. Article, uh.
Seven.
I think you skipped seven.
By seven, sorry. Should we want, uh.
That was back to.
Should we want?
Carol.
Back to me, yep.
Yep. And that's a, that's a majority. Article eight, fire chief again, it's just, it's a majority. Well, let's see, yeah, he's talking about where the money goes to, but that's a different issue, it's going into the capital stabilization.
Right.
It's not, it's not coming out of.
Yeah.
That's a majority.
Just majority, yeah.
Article nine, Chief Jenkins, majority. And this is, I, I, now, is it rested?
No.
No, so do you guys want to take it?
Yeah.
Uh, Peter, you're up, you know, you want to.
Ten, yep.
Yeah. Peter, why don't you do ten and eleven?
You got it.
That makes sense. And twelve, too.
And they're majority.
I think twelve is yours, baby.
Twelve to you, David.
Yep.
And that's a majority. Now, some of these are kind of, like, did we do, what's the thing for the capital, the ten thousand, they, did you just make a recommendation?
Let's say it again.
So Finance Committee makes a recommendation on spending things, but capital fund, projects, so like, is that a project, oh, to cover IT, no, that's not, to cover the IT costs, that wouldn't be a project, that's that opioid thing that we set up. Thirteen is yours, okay?
Oh, can we go back to twelve real quick?
Yep.
That money right now, the opioid money's in the stabilization fund, did that change anything?
Yep, it's coming out. Well, it's.
So you got that?
So we have it, so it's a separate stabilization fund.
Transfer from, yeah, opioids.
Oh, we had two-thirds.
Yeah.
We're going to go two-thirds on that. Thank you.
Nice catch.
Thirteen, town clerk, that's just a, but she just transferred accounts, it's a majority.
Miss Katie, or isn't it? But I don't.
Depends on where the accounts.
Oh, yeah, we, well, we don't, they don't know where the, we don't know where it's coming from.
But I think we did, I think we were talking about that not being an art, that for this, instead of being funded in FY twenty-five, that we were going to do this in FY twenty-four from the reserve fund. That was a conversation happening, but I don't know where it landed. I was part of the conversation, I just know what happened, so.
Well, that's why twenty-four is majority.
The only one that I knew that was.
If anything is going to come from, if it does remain an article and not get passed over, it would come from free cash.
Does that just be majority?
Yeah.
So I guess we have, so article fourteen, Mr. Kylie, but again, we don't know where it's coming from.
I think that this is going to be passed over.
I think so, too.
So we'll just, we'll, we'll just leave the question mark away. Yeah, we'll just leave it blank, then, because then they can, we can report it out.
Um, I, I'm reasonably certain that's going to be passed over.
All right. Article fifteen, uh, Carol.
Oh, good.
Of a tax, is that's.
Yeah, just go ahead. Taxing people some more.
For twenty dollars.
Come on, this is right before the election.
I don't think the statute.
We're going to check that one because of tax, but I think it's still a jar.
Yeah, the statute, I don't think the statute has anything specific about a two-thirds, so probably.
Library director, town resident?
No.
No.
Okay, so.
I'm right here.
She's right over there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The chair of your board can.
Yeah.
Who's it?
Who's the chair right now? Uh, Leah Herman.
Okay. So she'll do the next two, and they're both, they're both majority, come from free cash, or any other. We'll do both. So, Peter, you have the next one?
Yep.
Oh, this is that one we sort of said in the last meeting?
Passed over last time.
You passed over to get some people's information?
Yep. Yeah, we'll have a little bit further discussion regarding what the actual enterprise is.
Yep.
We'll talk before.
Yeah, just a majority.
Yep.
David, the bylaw change.
Look at you.
I hate that, no offense. Give my, give my political side on the others.
That's a bylaw change.
Uh, general, so you have just majority.
What is this, the NIP, the NIP?
Yeah.
This is the thing on.
Abington just shut it down.
Initial bottles, I think.
I must just shut it.
Don't call them NIPS?
Abington and Plymouth, I can't say that, and Abington and Plymouth just, Abington just shut it down last week.
Shut it down, yeah.
Plymouth shut it down a couple of weeks ago.
Let the people decide.
Yes, absolutely.
Isn't the state doing something with that?
We've been reading on that.
Well, they're, they're sitting on it.
Couple of years.
You could have just asked, I went into Brady outside, you could have asked him when he was here.
Get him back.
He could still be talking.
Trying to get out before midnight.
Uh, David, that one's yours, David, by nineteen.
Thought we did the door-to-door sales thing last year.
That, that seems to be coming up a lot lately.
That actually got, the way, I think we'd used one from another community.
Yeah, somewhere on the Cape, wasn't it, like, Falmouth or something?
But it actually got disapproved by the, by the AG's office.
Oh, really?
And so we, they, you know, they just, and they kind of cited a few areas that we tweaked, so it never went through.
So that's why it's coming back up.
It's actually a brand-new, because the other one never got approved. So this, we took the Attorney General's, you know, their suggestions and amended it to this version.
Okay.
So this will be a bylaw, it's going to be.
So that'll be a majority, too.
So we want to make sure we have that information that night of what was different.
Sure.
And what's, what we've tweaked, in case, so that we can explain.
Feel free to say you want to, as printed.
I was going to say, this is going to be me, and I don't have to read all that, right? Because if, if it all has to be read, then.
Yeah.
Mr. Spagone loves.
He's so yes.
As printed.
I mean, maybe, like you said, there may, like, if we know what the difference is between this one and the last one, there may be specific questions.
That's all we need to, you know.
Yeah, there's, yeah.
Just so we know what those are.
Right, yeah. It was just, it was really, probably only like two, like minor changes, so, yeah.
Great.
Someone's donated, this is Peter, someone donated this land.
Yeah, I know where that is, yeah. I could do both of these.
Yeah, that makes.
Oh, there's two of them?
Yep.
Okay.
Got both of them.
Joyce, right?
Those will be two-thirds.
Oh, my land. Two-thirds.
Two-thirds for both.
On twenty, so Peter, you doing twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yes.
I'm kind of, I'm going to feel bad, I don't know who the agricultural commissioner is.
I wondered why you all were here.
Who's it, which one's the chair, or the agricultural?
Lynn, are you the chair?
Okay, I'm Carol.
Carol's the chair.
Carol, what's your last name?
I'm just pointing at you, that fat one.
What's her last name?
Okay.
Carol, what's your last?
I'm sorry, what?
What is your last name?
Guarino.
Please call that.
G-U-A-R-I-N-O.
Okay.
All right, and that's.
That's just general.
Majority, that's the majority. Is Roy the chairman of the plan board?
No.
Kevin Riley.
Kevin Riley.
All right, see.
Twenty-four will be a two-thirds.
Yeah. Another one, one, twenty-five.
Oh.
It's going to be Kevin Riley again.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
He's got the rest of the show.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-six is Kevin.
Same thing, two-thirds.
Just, just accepting the map. Oh, I'm zoning changes.
Yeah, to the, twenty-five is the actual language of the overlay district, and twenty-six is the map, the description.
The select board has twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven is Kevin again.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. David, you get to bring it on, the last one, David, oh, no, twenty-eight is David. I mean, by general bylaws, it's majority.
Yep.
Majority, you said?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yep.
Okay.
And Kevin again.
The last one, two-thirds.
That's so.
Yeah, so two-thirds on the twenty-nine.
Who would be the so?
Well, it's, it's across the by the.
Planning board.
Oh, yeah, it's Kevin Riley.
Yep.
Great.
Any questions?
Can I ask a change on the ad con? I think we're going to have the vice chair, the administration.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
You did so quick.
Okay, who's the vice chair?
Susan.
Who's, who's the vice chair?
I'm here.
Jan Badger.
Jan what?
Badger. Number what's that?
Uh, twenty-three.
That's fine. Anything else?
No.
You didn't get this?
Nope. Did you meet Bobby D before? What?
Did you meet, have you met, did you meet Bobby D before he was, have you ever met him? Is what I guess is my question to you.
Did you see him tonight?
He was here tonight, signed the.
No, no, no. No, I met him at the, yeah, I met with him.
Oh, you were at the meeting, right, right.
Yeah.
Him and his wife, right, 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 okay.
Oh, okay, oh, you guys already did it?
We just signed, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We did it first, so the meeting after.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, see you May thirteenth.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Katie.
Happy twentieth.
We'll get you a cake.
Oh, please don't.
All right, now we can do, we can do action item number one.
All right, make motion to close the special and annual town meeting. Approve, excuse me, yeah, this is going to be a bit small. Proven to close a special town annual town warrant for May thirteenth, 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a warrant, May thirteenth, 2024, town meeting.
Town meeting.
So where were we?
Eight. Number eight.
Number eight.
Discussion and vote on surplus policy.
Which this is what Charlie drew up based on our discussion last time, right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Now that we have a policy...
All right, here we go.
We can declare some surplus.
Yep. Discuss a vote on the surplus request from Library Director Jessica Henderson to surplus furniture from the historical room at the library.
Second.
Jessica is here, if you guys have questions.
Just don't show this to Dale.
It's not coming to my house. That has already been established.
Be sure of that. Oh, wait a minute, he's texting me now.
Put it in the garage, put it in the garage.
No, I, I mean, we went through it all, yeah, last week.
Jessica, you're just here in case we had questions, you don't have any burning need to come up and explain to us, okay.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go, surplus away.
Discuss a vote surplus request from EB Chem Director Russ Hennigan to surplus equipment.
What equipment?
And you do this pending...
Pending...
The surplus property report.
Okay.
He had emailed me a list, but he didn't give us the sheet.
Okay. So he wants to pass it over, or do you want us to just approve it pending that, if Charlie looks at the list and says it's okay?
Yeah, it's up to you, I mean, we're meeting in a couple of weeks anyway, if you want to pass it.
I'm sure it's not anything that's...
Yeah.
Okay, so pending...
Pending report.
The surplus, yeah.
As stated.
All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove the request from Social Cocktails LLC for one-day liquor license for the center at Satcham Rock on April 11th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove the request from Deana Lepine of East Bridora Community Gardens for use of the Satcham Rock Farm on May 4th, 2024, rain date May 5th, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for the community garden open workday. Plot hole, plot holders will clean up beds and prepare plots for starting planting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thirteen, yeah, approve request of resident...
Will we pass this over?
Will we pass it over, or do you want us to actually vote to not approve it?
It's been recommended not to approve it.
Okay, so, make the motion for discussion, yep.
Uh, let's do that again. Approve and request of resident Christine Biel for the use of the town parking lot, town common in Satcham Rock Farm for a dog scent training during off-hours when buildings are closed. The training consists of hiding odor, contain, contain hides on benches, tables, rock, rocks, et cetera, everywhere, I guess, anywhere and everywhere. The leash dog will take approximately five to 10 minutes to search. There is no specific date, there is no specific schedule.
You second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion, and what was the reason for them not recommending?
At the center, there are a lot of dogs that are off-leash.
Correct.
So it could be...
And it could interfere with the distraction, could interfere. Nancy said.
Yep.
And the police chief said, okay, up here, but not down there, and...
Right, so it might be better if they found it.
It's a better thing to maybe find private property where she can do it.
There are dogs out there all the time.
Yep.
So am I going to reach out to her, I'm assuming, and...
I will.
Okay, so, all in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I don't think I've ever had to do an all-opposed before.
All right. Uh, let's see, approve request of Tammy Glur of Ranger Events LLC.
The Ragnar Road Relay.
The running relay, yep, Ranger Road, New England.
Pay close attention to the time.
May 18, 2024, from 2:00 AM till 10:00 AM. This is not the first rodeo here.
Second, no, they've been having...
They do this every year.
Yeah, they just stroll through.
It doesn't cause any interruption, but it's just funny that there's people running through town.
When I get home at 2:00 o'clock, I almost hit them every year.
What are you doing out till 2:00 in the morning?
Trying to find my house.
Running the relay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we got an additional one here on this list. Discuss and approve to add the following ballot question to the May 18, 2024 annual town election warrant. Shall the town's acceptance of Chapter 31 of the general laws, civil service law, be revoked for the rank of sergeants, reserve patrolman, and regular patrolman within the police department? There's a summary here, but I don't know if I need to...
You don't have to read the summary, this is the question, yeah. But if you want to give a summary.
Is your second?
Second.
I don't really know what the summary is, because this just came up, so Charlie, or Rebecca?
I'll, I put it on here, so I'll do it. So the summary is sergeants, reserve patrolmen, and regular patrolmen within the police department are currently subject to the state civil service laws, which govern matters such as original appointments, promotions, and terminations from the department, from employment. The ballot question would revoke the town's acceptance of general laws, Chapter 31, the state civil service statute, for the rankings of sergeants, reserve patrolmen, and regular patrolmen within the police department. However, current members of the department in that rank will remain covered by the statute's protections.
Okay.
And that's a brief summary of that question, that will be on the ballot if you still approve.
And we're doing this even though we already voted to remove the town from civil service? Is this part of that same...
We did that at a town meeting, we did that at a town meeting last year, this is an extension of that process.
But now the state is saying it also needs to go on the ballot.
With specific rules, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Press print.
That's all I have for you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spagone. Announcements, Rebecca, staff reports?
I do not have any.
Town Administrator report, Charlie, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Hello. You're up.
I'm going to take this all at once, because the way the speakers work here, I hear myself a few seconds later, it gets weird. Working with the department heads, Melody and Dale, I think we made a lot of progress on putting together a balanced budget for fiscal '25 despite our revenue crunch. The Finance Committee meeting on Tuesday, and then maybe next week on Tuesday and Wednesday. I made sure that other departments are aware of this, and also, not only have presented a scenario of two, how the balanced budget is not voted on by the Finance Committee or anything else, so it's certainly subject to change, but it's an example of what could be done, and we made our balanced budget presented to town meeting on May 13th. I'm very thankful for the work done by Melody and Dale in this endeavor, and also the cooperation of the, of all the departments. It's, you know, it's, honestly, we're under some financial restraints, I think the department has realized that, and we've tried hard to ensure that the programs are being flooded at an adequate level. But if it just doesn't, then we'll find out more on Tuesday, next Tuesday, and Wednesday on the budget. Obviously, it's still subject to change, the house budget, for instance, in terms of state aid and school aid, still needs to come out probably next week, and we voted a plan that may make some adjustments. But we should, we'll have something presented on May 13th, and I think we're in better shape than we were a few weeks ago on that endeavor. Rebecca, on the poultry bylaw, I don't know whether it was listed on the warrant, and I, we left it on there in case the border health did not argue a regulation for chickens, which, having talked to the department, they've indicated that they cannot let to do available regulations. We're waiting to see if the Agricultural Commission in the next couple of days comes back with a proposed bylaw. I spoke with Ren Beller of the Act Commission a few days ago, I think there's, at least by verdict, by the committee, to keep it extremely simple, the problem they're running into more than anything else is chickens getting off people's properties. And I think the bylaw will try and simply do the research enough that chickens love the poultry, and remain all on a person's property without going into what some people might consider an overregulation. But we'll find out next few days.
Charlie, the Agricultural Commission members are here. Are you guys happy with the bylaw as it was printed in the warrant?
Yes.
Okay, so they're good with...
Oh, sorry, go ahead. We did add a bylaw, the bylaw to the warrant, Chris Kenny sent me a draft of that today. Agricultural is meeting Wednesday, and then they can kind of review and discuss the bylaw that's in the warrant, and then get back to us. But we just wanted to put something in there.
Okay.
We're happy.
It's nice.
Yep, they're hap, they're happy with it.
Agricultural's good.
Good.
So that's good, okay, continue.
Then we're kids in Prince County towns are talking to John Haines about whether to indicate an interest in working with the county commissioners, once we're given a forged plan if anything else. The plan is that, I'm not sure if there's any efficiency or savings or anything, it might be, but it might be worthwhile at least taking a look at, but I would be ready to add two John names before replying to indicate an interest or not.
Okay.
That's Rebecca for the public.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, any discussion, any questions for him?
Nope.
All right, four discussions, David?
Nope, I'm good.
Peter? All right, we're good, then we are going into executive session.
Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you, everybody.
Suitor Mashdina Lodge, at the 38th, 62182, conduct, ready sessions and preparation of negotiations, not yet. Nobody's listening to me.
I'll come see you.
Contract, negotiations.
Give it to Rebecca? And I want to talk to you about the budget stuff, too.
Accountant, town administrator, select...
Are you just sitting at, like, a...
Eight, twenty-one, eighty-eight, bargaining, or litigation.
Are you done yet?
In effect, bargaining, litigation, clerical review, dispatches, uh, suing times, buddy, there's a lot here. Everyone, times, strategy, perspective, bargaining, or litigation, chip.
Normally speaking, we don't do this, because normally, people are going in there.
Getting position in a matter of...
If it wasn't a town thing, then they have to stay there.
To close executive sessioning, I, Peter Spagone, Junior, Clerk.
Aye, Dixie.
See ya, Tammy.
No, no, I...
She's a second, yeah.
Aye, Carol Julius. We're going to executive session, folks, and we are not returning. Be safe out there, hope everybody enjoyed the eclipse.